Good morning, everyone. Please be seated. So before I call the meeting to order, I just want to point out that this is the very first County Council meeting with our new C A O, Craig Kelly. Please make the meeting memorable. He does. And Paul's underlining is still there, too, I believe, as well. Anyway, it's my pleasure to call the Renfrew County Council meeting of September 28th to order. As we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. I will now ask everyone to stand up for a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, Mr. Kelly, please.
Thank you, Warden. Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Bros?
Here.
Counselor Doncaster?
Present.
Counselor Donahue?
Here.
Counselor Ema?
Present.
Counselor Grills?
Present.
Counselor Hunt?
Here.
Counselor Keller?
Here.
Counselor Love? Counselor Lynch?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Pickett?
Present.
Counselor Aguirre?
Present.
Counselor Weinwell?
Here.
Counselor Sweet?
Present.
Counselor T J?
Here.
Warden Robinson?
Present.
Roll call. Everyone's here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I need a mover and a seconder to adopt the minutes of the Renfrew County Council meeting held August 31st, 2022. Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Lynch, Counselor Pickett, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much.
Members of County Council, during the month of September, I attended eighteen meetings on county business. On September the 7th, I attended a special meeting of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. Topics of discussion were the Eastern Ontario Regional Housing Network project, the Rural Housing Information System digital data tool, and of course, the election of C A O Craig Kelly as the Secretary Treasurer of the E O W C for the remainder of my term as Chair, which I understand will be sometime in January. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the Eastern Ontario Municipal Conference held in Cornwall from September 14th to 16th, but I did have the opportunity to bring greetings virtually as the Chair of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. On September 22nd, I attended, along with C A O Craig Kelly and our Chair of Community Services Counselor James Bros, a roundtable meeting with the City of Pembroke as well as external agencies on the issue of homelessness. Also in attendance was Director of Community Services Laura Lepine, Ontario Works Manager Andrea Patrick, and Manager of Housing and Homelessness Jennifer Dombrowski. The annual Upper Ottawa Valley Chamber of Commerce Awards Gala was held on September 24th. I'm very pleased to report that the County of Renfrew was presented with the 2022 Business Excellence Award, Community Impact Award, for the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Centre. During the gala held at the Normandy Officers' Mess in Garrison, Petawawa, trophies right here. We also received congratulations from M P P and M Ps, and they're actually in the kitchen if anyone would like to look at them. The county was represented by Counselor Donahue, Chair of the Health Committee, C A O Craig Kelly, Matthew Grenier, Deputy Chief Clinical Programs Emergency Services Department, and David Wybough, Business Development Officer. This year, the awards were judged by Chamber of Commerce executives from across Canada who were not Upper Ottawa Valley Chamber members. This was a great opportunity to not only get provincial, but national attention for Renfrew County V TAC, and I sincerely hope our Ministry of Health took notice. The passing of Queen Elizabeth II this month is still having an impact on all of us, and I want to thank staff and residents who came to sign the book for condolences. Many of you who came not only signed the book, but came to share stories of what the Queen meant to you. It was a display of true respect and admiration. This month was spent writing many follow-up letters from the delegation meetings at A M O on behalf of the County of Renfrew and the E O W C. While these meetings with ministers and ministry staff are important, the real advocacy work advancing our position on various issues should be an ongoing venture. Covid certainly contained our activities, however, we are working very hard to make up that ground now. I have fifty-six days left as your warden, and I am determined to use them as effectively as possible. September 30th, on Friday, marks the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, and I encourage everyone to reflect on this day, which honors the children who never return home, and survivors of residential schools, as well as their families and communities. I would also recommend a visit to New Gagama Garden, open to all. Doesn't slide off my tongue very easily now, but it will. It is a wonderful place for peaceful reflection. I will remind those assembled here of the following: The County of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my report. It is now my pleasure to introduce our delegation this morning, Elder Amy Bailey, to speak about the significance of the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation this Friday. Amy is a knowledge keeper from the Algonquins of Pickwack and Algon First Nation, spokesperson for the Circle of Turtle Lodge, and an Algonquin graduate. She holds an Honors Degree in Humanities from York University and a postgraduate certificate as a traditional practitioner from First Nations Technical Institute. Being from the Sturgeon Clan, who are the educators in traditional communities, Elder Bailey suggests that we think of her as a reference librarian. She has positioned herself as someone to help us find answers to any cultural questions, either from knowledge and experience, or by making connections to her wide and varied network of other Indigenous people. Amy led our ceremony opening New Gagama Garden and was the Indigenous lead for the project built by Williams Sons. Amy, welcome to County Council.
Amy, just a second. I see that you're speaking, and I can tell that your mic is on, but we're not hearing you here. Is there an issue, Sean or Tina? Just gonna wait one second.
Warden, I suggest we just take a small break.
Okay. All right, Amy, we're having some technical difficulty. Can you just shake your head if you can hear me? Okay, we're just having some technical difficulty. We're going to take a ten-minute break, and we'll be back then. So if you want to take us offline, Sean, please.
We've expected the bodies to be found at some point in the calls to action. Well, maybe in the report from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I think they estimated about fifteen thousand bodies. Fifteen thousand children disappeared, so we've only found some of them. I think it's up to about maybe under five thousand so far, so there will be more bodies found as the work continues. And what I've asked to have shared on the screen is the calls to action that were presented by the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. These were put out in, I think it was 2015. We, of course, the Indigenous population of Canada was very, very aware of all of these calls and set to work immediately on making them come into being. So we have been, I've continued our cultural awareness education that we've offered for almost twenty-five years now here, but these calls have asked everyone in Canada to really look at this and pick up the ball, I guess, in those kind of terms, to make this become a reality. So number eighty in the calls to action was for the government to create a statutory holiday for truth and reconciliation in Canada. So that is September 30th. Last year was the first one. So we are now making that day be a day for commemoration of the lives, of the children that were lost, of the children's lives that were damaged, and of the families and all the survivors who had to deal with all of this stolen children syndrome that we've had over the years. So I want you to treat it the way that we treat Remembrance Day. So even though it's a statutory holiday, it's not a day to go to the beach, or, you know, to do that kind of thing. It's a day to commemorate and to grieve, for the families to grieve, for the Indigenous people to start to heal about all of the children that were lost, the potential that was gone from those children. So we're doing a ceremony at Algonquin College on Friday morning. It'll be about nine thirty, a quarter to ten, something like that. But what we're going to do is give everyone a little bit of tobacco, a pinch of tobacco, and they're going to ask you to put your prayers for the suffering, to have the suffering end for the people and the survivors of residential schools, and to help the grieving process to proceed. So all of the things that you would put in, all your wishes for the families and the Indigenous people of Canada, put that prayers in that tobacco, and then we're going to have a tobacco bowl to put that offering in, and then we're going to offer that to the river. And so that will take away the prayers to Creator. That's the way that we do our things. So the way that you would do, put in the poppy on the Remembrance Day for the veterans who have passed, then we would ask that you put in a pinch of tobacco and your prayers, the children who have passed over the decades at these schools. So the number eighty on the calls to action is talking about setting aside that date for commemoration of all of, so first, that is to say that, yes, it happened, and now that the bodies have been found, we know that it happened. You can't unlearn that anymore. So the first thing to do is to acknowledge that it did happen, and then start to feel, imagine what it would have been like if those were your kids who were taken. So somehow, the government made some kind of rule that said, okay, your kids are better off with us. We're going to take them whether you like it or not, and we're going to put them somewhere where you can't be with them. And so some of those kids, and some of your kids, didn't come back. That's the kind of feeling that we need you to understand when you're thinking about this day. So that's the kind of understanding and empathy that you can put into that tobacco as well. So that's what I would say about September 30th and the commemoration that needs to be done. But while I have you at the calls to action, I would like you to look at, I'd like you to read them all, if you can. I know that you're all busy, but all of these actions, all of these calls are something that you can take part of and be part of. Number fifty-seven in particular is one that says all levels of government in Canada should take it upon themselves to learn the local history, the whole history, but also the local history. And I do seminars on that kind of thing as well, but there's also blanket exercises, and that is an experiential workshop that helps you to step through the Indigenous history from start to finish, kind of, or at least from the settler point of view, and let you experience the kinds of traumas that Indigenous people have endured over the decades. So those are some of the things. There's many, many other things in here, too, that maybe you can take to heart and see that you can do something about while you're in office, and then afterwards, when you retire from that as well. So I appreciate the opportunity to point these out to you and to let you... So I appreciate the opportunity to point these out to you and to let you know the kinds of things that we're... That we've been doing over the years. So that concludes my presentation, but if there's any questions, I would try to answer them for you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Amy. Certainly, it's a very sobering message, but I would... What I would say is that the members of County Council, we are very aware of what happened, and we have acknowledged that many times within these chambers. As far as the understanding the local Indigenous history, going forward, I do believe that CEO Kelly has some plans in the future to provide some opportunities for not only staff but council as well, to become more knowledgeable about what has really happened to our neighbours that we live with on a daily basis. And again, I would just remind everyone about Amy mentioning at Algonquin College in Pembroke on Friday at 9:30. I will certainly try my very best to be there as well. And are there any comments? councillor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And just in the last hour, Amy and I had a chance to speak, and she will also be coming to the opening of our permanent Truth and Reconciliation Garden in Eaganville on Saturday at 1 o'clock, and I invite you all to come. It's really beautiful, and we're very proud of it. And Amy, thank you so much for agreeing to join us on Saturday.
Okay. Councillor Murphy. Any other comments? If not, Amy, again, thank you very much. I know you're off to another event. You're a very, very busy woman, so I appreciate the time you took today to be with us. Megwich.
Megwich. Councillor Murphy.
Okay. Mr. Kelly, correspondents.
Thank you, Warden. All correspondence has been forwarded to the appropriate committees.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll start our committee reports, the strategic plan update. Again, Mr. Kelly, please, sir.
Hopefully, no technical issues with me, but that's okay. Good morning, councils. It's my pleasure to walk through the package that was distributed to you earlier this week. Of course, we started several years ago down the path of strategic planning. This was our second one in recent history, at least anyways. The prior council had completed one, and of course, you had completed one in 2019. Of course, when we started this process in 2019, the world was a lot different, and we started talking about strategic directions. The snow was melting. And if you recall 2019, I'm sure councillor Murphy will, the rivers were rising, the flooding was happening, and my gosh, we were hosting Osum, the conference right next door at Best Western, while helicopters were flying and picking up the warden at that time and flying us over the flooded areas. Ironically, the theme of the time was changing landscapes, and of course, we've seen that happen over the course of the last couple of years. Combining staffing resources into one building was only a glint in the eyes of a few of the staff, of the senior staff, and we had figured the Pembroke property study would actually result in something. Of course, here we are today. We were sure that a strategic plan would build upon the previous efforts that were done by the previous council and would be flexible to capture the needs and wants of this council. We told you that we'd bring targets to the table, and we'd communicate the progress of our strategic plan as we went, and that we'd integrate strategic priorities into our regular reviews with staff, and that we'd work these into our regular reports. As you now see on your reports, we've identified these regularly in our committee reports. But we had no idea that that would be the tip of the iceberg in 2019. A year later, many of us were working on something called Zoom and our teams, and we were banging pots and pans outside of our windows in recognition of the hard work day in and day out the nurses and paramedics were doing in our communities. Times changed, obviously, from 2019 to where we are today. But as distributed, I've sent this around, and by no means am I going to go through each and individual one. There's several of them here, but this was a review of what you set out and gave us and gave yourselves in 2019. We started with a mission statement still holds true, that we would deliver high-quality services to the residents of the County of Renfrew in an efficient and cost-effective manner. And we did that through a vision statement that we defined as being the county as recognised as a model rural community balancing fiscal responsibility in the delivery of services and infrastructure that meet community needs. It went further on to say we earned this reputation over several years by having a strong voice with federal and provincial governments, by embracing technology that supports our residents and positions us as a leader in broadband connectivity. Ironically, I'll stop because today we're filming YouTube Live to people in the residence, so I think you were foreshadowing what was to come. We said we'd manage our fiscal pictures through sustainable asset management. We would be identifying efficiencies that allow the county to improve service delivery while meeting the service level expectations of our residents. I think this building in Renfrew County Place are now true, truly indicative of those changes that we'd make to our delivery services. And we'd enhance the four pillars of economic development, leading to improved quality of life, and those four pillars we've all of us identified as agricultural, manufacturing, tourism, and forestry and value-added wood processing. And we worked... We'd be working effectively with local municipalities, and you'll see that as we've gone through some... Several shared use agreements or shared service agreements with our municipalities moving forward. So if I can, just to highlight a few of these in your packages that were distributed. Of course, under your first priority, communications, you identified to us that a communication plan was required, that we need to be better communicators. Well, it took us a bit of time. Of course, the pandemic was that thing thrown in the midst of us, the floods were thrown in there, but I hope you will see we have a marked increase in how we communicate to you, to the public, and to our municipalities. Our communique, for example, the recent hiring of very talented journalists, all these new social media posts that we're handling, and including today's YouTube and other YouTube broadcasts are an effective way of communicating to the public and to your municipalities, who are quite often left to the side of our communication, and that has been strengthened over the past year or so. Of course, all the messaging that we've had through the floods and the pandemic, that was ongoing and it still remains an important part of our past three or four years that we've had. Another part of our communication strategies and part of our priority number one was our meetings with our federal and provincial colleagues, more so because of how we've been positioned. We've had folks on AMO, EOR, FCM, Roma, and of course, the Warden's Caucus. So over the course of several years, again, the warden and respectively, one of you or all of you have met with Premier Doug Ford, several ministers at several ministries in pushing that ball forward. An example of that is his meeting back in 2019, if you believe it, back in December, with Premier Ford and the minister at the time, Mayor Lee Fullerton, about how we can ease the pressures on healthcare and long-term care, and that eventually resulted in one of the first pilot projects of community paramedicine in long-term care. So again, effective leadership, effective lobbying. Of course, the pandemic messaging led to the messaging about VTAC and littered throughout this whole document as referencing VTAC and how the lobbying efforts continued, but lobbying efforts were great, messaging was even greater, on how we communicated, how people could navigate their way through the pandemic, and VTAC was an important piece of that, and I'd like to emphasise the importance of that and, again, congratulate the successes of those involved in VTAC as referenced on with Saturday night locally. Again, there was other pieces of that communication piece, but one of which I'm more proud of as former director was the efforts made by the Chair of DMP and staff at the time to lobby the provincial government, which resulted in, you know, a million dollars' worth of aggregate that councillor Reinhold is so happy to see spread on the Algonquin Trail. So again, these lobby efforts work, folks, and I hope that we do continue those as we move forward into a new phase. Upcoming events that we should celebrate and look forward to is Renfrew County Day November 3rd at Queen's Park, so we're deep in the midst of planning for that day and hope those efforts pay off in terms of recognising the County of Renfrew who we are and educating MPPs on where we are and what we do in Renfrew County. Other items I've noted in the wrap-up is where we position ourselves. I started talking about Osum, how we started in 2019, but then other notes is 2022 Ontario Winter Games, which councillor Yima will now reference as the 2023 Winter Games. So it's... We actually got Winter Games twice, councillor, so there you are. So we're pushing that forward. And of course, little things that we're working on developing over the years, the Renfrew Shire Twinning Mission and the new Jim... Oh, my goodness, New Jim... New Jimmackamig.
New Jimmackamig.
New Jimmackamig. Thank you, Warden. We practise this together often, so thank you very much. So we've taken steps in our communication, and again, as we've just heard from Amy Bailey, this is a communication of our relationship with our First Nations partners, and an important first step as we move forward. Item number two, of course, is fiscal sustainability, and again, we've taken the lead on new housing in Lee Street as we prepare to break ground over the next couple of months on that project. That is taking funds that we're seeking and achieving from different levels of government to create more housing, and it's a fiscally responsible way of doing it by using different funds and different avenues to get that funding, to bring that to you and to the people of the Renfrew County. I'd be remiss to say that the Public Works and Engineering Department wasn't on task and on schedule and had completed over $53 million worth of public works over these past few years in doing it in a responsible fashion, most of the times at budget or near budget. We are heading into very, very difficult times as we're seeing tenders roll in and meeting expectations will be more difficult as we roll into the future, but I know that we're well-prepared with Mr. Perkins and his staff as we move forward on a very, very aggressive public work schedule. You note in 2022, Mr. Scanlon from Watson and Associates is working with us and working with you. We'll be working with you on development charges, and that's another methodology to make us fiscally responsible and to fund some of these long-term asset projects that we have. Of course, that will be fleshed out over the course of the next 12 months, and we'll bring more to you, but at least we've started that process to review that. And again, remiss not to mention how we've moved the yardstick in an effective manner fiscally on the Algonquin Trail by leveraging government grant dollars and leveraging future surpluses that would pay for any grants that we could foresee. We'd never thought, at least personally, I never thought we'd be where we are in some of our trail projects, and now we're approaching north of Stonecliff, which is after three, four years. Congratulations to all staff and, of course, council for being involved in that. Item number three is a service delivery review as identified in the strategic plan. In 2019, we started talking about bringing people into this building. Well, here we are. The renovation's actually generating more than $450,000 in annual efficiency, so we will play this out over the next six to seven years, and then council at that time will make a decision on how we're going to use those efficiencies. But the model is working very well. I hope that other municipalities use this as a model. We are collaborating more than ever and communicating more than ever amongst different departments, and I hope that that will continue as we move forward over the next few years. Starting us off is Renfrew County Place, where we did a human integration project earlier in the days of the strategic plan, and again, it too is working. We've evolved it a little bit throughout the pandemic, the paramedic service, subleased, I guess, if you will, some space, and we used it very effectively with our community service partners. So again, this combination and this effective service delivery, the one-window approach where you walk into either of our main administration buildings was... Has been affected to the public, and now they come here for one-stop shop when they require the services that the County of Renfrew provides. I don't have the document in front of me, but we work on it regularly. Is the Strategy Core Service Delivery Review, where we are constantly working on making efficient decisions. Mr. Perkins has brought a business case before this council about renewing how we do infrastructure with internal designs. Mr. Foss was not the Director of Corporate Services when we started this, so HR and finance were realigned to better service ourselves as well as local municipalities, so that was a change throughout this time, and you'll see more changes and more business cases move forward. I believe even in development of property as things grow and change with trails and forestry and the growth of the planning division to create an effective assembly line of decisions for us as we move it forward. We've also gone through a non-union compensation review from the Gallagher Group, so that was something that was tasked of us for several years, so that's now been completed to bring us to a new benchmark for staff. So we will work on that and work to update that more often as we grow in the future. So we will see more of that being referenced in the future as we bring business cases forward. And of course, at the same time, the council compensation was brought in line with what the realities are on the ground and recognising how much you individually work on a regular basis in this part-time job that you call a county councillor. In 2019 and early, if you remember, we took a tour. We toured and said, remember that housing thing in Renfrew? Yeah, well, we took that over, the Opiuma Housing Corporation. So we amalgamated in the Opiuma Housing Corporation assets into our housing mix and are happy that that's humming along quite nicely. We've just completed some renovations of some awnings and some porches, and we'll continue to do so, but that was a fantastic addition and a great decision of council at the time. But that came before the seniors' housing strategy. So unfortunately, we've been sidetracked with other projects, but we are working with several groups now. In our prior, for instance, we've been participants at recent housing strategy meetings taking place up in Berry's Bay, now in Killloo, in Bonnershire Valley, Pembroke, and other places about the housing desire, the housing need that exists in Renfrew County. So the seniors' housing strategy will play a role, and we hope to grow that as we move forward in new methods of delivering housing to the people of Renfrew County and those that want to make this their home. A big milestone in the made-in-Renfrew County type way that we do things was OPA 31, the County Official Plan, Official Plan Amendment, that now, as the minister said to us at the time, has given us the pen. We are working with several land developers on using that pen and creating an environment where this is a development-friendly area. We always have been, but we're working on that communication to try to move files along and create those new developments, those new severances, those new subdivisions for your municipalities so we can see growth. In long-term care, the Personal Support Worker Programme through Algonquin College has been an incredible success, and thank you to Ms. Sheedy and now Mr. Blackmore for the incredible continuing success of this. We started in September officially, and then in Bonnershire Manor, just for... Sorry, in September, we just started at Miramichi Lodge, but prior to that, Bonnershire Manor was deeply involved with the college and now plans to graduate a third class in this fall, so congratulations to that. Having personal support workers in the home, seeing the job before they accept it full time, hopefully recruiting these new students back to into one of our homes is growing our own, which we've talked about continually, training them, teaching them, and growing them, and making it a place where they want to work when they graduate. Of course, the implementation of the Butterfly Approach Programme was one that we all heard about several years ago, and we... I know Mr. Blackmore is anxious to roll that out. We're still waiting for additional funding models and just working on the right time to roll this out. It'd be remiss if I didn't say that both staff and management have been extraordinary in their efforts to thwart COVID-19 as best they could in these two homes throughout these past years. So a lot of these projects unfortunately have been sidelined a little bit, but Mr. Blackmore promises that they'll be back on the top of the page and going forward as we navigate through the end of COVID-19, hopefully in the very short future. Staying with long-term care homes, the Bonnershire Manor and Miramichi Lodge over these last few years were awarded Canada's highest accreditation award, the exemplary status, and again, due to the fact of the management that's there, the staff, and the dedication and commitment that they have. Pages in this report, I won't go through them necessarily, that the emergency management or emergency services department have found cost savings through the leadership of Chief Nolan. Deputy Chief Leahy and Deputy Chief Grenier have put forward a number of cost-saving results, all in the midst of a pandemic and while they're out treating and triaging patients on the side of the road, on the side of the trail, while testing and assessing folks all throughout the area. So work still went on while work was getting done, if you will. Priority number four to wrap the strategic plan up was the technology acceleration. So again, I've mentioned it a few times during the pandemic, we used the Zoom platform. We continue to use that. It was an effective fashion, an effective manner of doing things. Under Mr. Foss's leadership, the IT department took the lead on that, and we continue to use that. We have found it very effective communicating with folks, making applications in the planning department, working with local municipalities. It saves us travel time. I'm not discounting the fact of face-to-face meetings is still very important, and we continue to look at those as we move forward, but this hybrid approach, I think, is important and will be important as we move forward to continue serving the public in an effective fashion. In 2021 and 2022, we're working with municipal modernisation programme funding, both Intake Two and Intake Three. We've launched the IT strategy, which you've given a full direction to move forward on. So we're finding... So we're finding efficiencies by contributing towards the ESRE mapping program for the planning services. We're updating the IT network and some of the strategies around that and looking at different ways of bringing new staff in with a different skill set to grow how we use such things as Microsoft Teams and our Office 365. Very boring stuff for you, I know, but how that works is how it allows us to work more effectively with our local municipalities using these different technology upgrades. We've gone through a whole new phone system, bringing in a whole bunch of new staff means a whole bunch of new phone systems. So that, again, was all part and parcel of the modernization funds that we went through. And of course, the chambers that you sit in today have all been modernized and upgraded to allow streaming of committees, councils and whatever lies in the future in terms of being a TV studio, if you will, for the government. In public works, they now have, I'll simply use the word "tracking systems" on all their vehicles so we can track the movements and use that financially to see what we're putting into mileage and gas and operations overall. We also brought forward the road weather information system. So now we have cameras at a couple of different sites that are patrol yards so we can actually monitor the weather at these geographical areas. Again, you think things that we would have had years ago, but it wasn't until the last four years where we actually implemented these changes. In the paramedic service, they became pilots in the last few years. They were the first paramedic service in Canada to get Transport Canada approval to fly drones. And now these drones are being used in medical emergencies. And now our paramedics are teaching our forester how to use a smaller drone to assess forestry blowdowns and forestry operations, which will help our, I'll call it workman's compensation, our worker's ability to go out into the field is much safer to use a drone in several instances where a blowdown may be dangerous or other operations. And I know Counselor Hunt has always asked, what about broadband? And we keep talking about, what are we doing with broadband? Well, I think you'll hear today what we're doing for broadband in the northern part of the county through a resolution in committee early this morning. But through our efforts with Eeyorn, and thank you for sitting on the board, Counselor Murphy, we are now witnessing 25 upgraded cell towers and 60 new towers in Renfrew County. So that's part of the new Rogers build with Eeyorn. So that's part of your contribution towards Eeyorn and how that will roll out. Due to your lobbying efforts of council and through letters from the warden, there are millions, tens of millions of dollars worth of fiber being put in every road, every side road, every tower in the county of Renfrew at the moment. I wish I had a map of them all. We don't. But it's continually this lobbying efforts at different levels of government that's allowed this to happen and allowed the telecom service providers to get this funding to move forward. And of course, I said I'd mention it and I'd mention it again, residents now have 24/7 access to basically a family physician through RCV-TAC. And that's, I think, of all these four years, the technology upgrades, that's one to be celebrated as that is a major piece of technology. As we get people connected and as they are connected, they are seeing the shortage in jobs and shortage and otherwise, we've allowed them to work at home, but we've also allowed them to access family healthcare, which is important to everybody living in the county of Renfrew. So the next steps is identified in January. We're starting again. It'd be a new council sitting around here, at least seven new faces. And we'll be starting the process to develop the next three, four-year plan. And we should have that completed. And I know there's lots of work still to be done. We didn't get it all done. We tried, but there's still more work to be done. And I'm sure there's other ideas out there that we haven't even identified yet with this council and new council. So on behalf of us, thank you to the elected. Thank you for taking the time to hear us out, to believe in our recommendations and for participating in a healthy debate. The decisions and outcomes are yours to celebrate, quite honestly. I'd also like to thank CAO Paul Morrow, who left us with this document, started with this document, left us with this document, but he kept us on track for four years and set the stage for success moving forward. On behalf of my colleagues at the SLT tables, I'd like to thank and acknowledge the extreme hard work of you and all of your staff for getting these accomplishments completed without their commitment and really all staff's commitment. The county of Renfrew wouldn't take the pride that we would have in this. And I think they all take pride in their daily jobs and come to work. Even if they were working at home, they still did their work effectively and efficiently as we move forward. So in closing, it's been a pleasure working with all of you over the last four years. Some of you will be returning and again, there's still lots left to accomplish. But for those retiring or leaving us in October, again, you should be proud of what you've done for you, for your municipality and for the county of Renfrew. And you know, I know you've still got some work left to do in October. We still have a council meeting, committee meeting, so you're not off the hook yet. But good luck to all and I'm open for questions should you have them. Thank you, council. Thank you, warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. That was such a great report. I wish I could just stop council meeting now. Just on a high, right? You didn't go through every one of those bullet points, but there's 56 there if anyone bothers to count. And by no means, I suspect, that we probably missed a few along the way. So you know, it's interesting when you think back, you know, we were faced with a pandemic. We talked about the lockdowns and how, I mean, we just kept moving forward. And I mean, we did all the day-to-day stuff that we had to do, plus, plus, plus. And I think that is so very impressive. And certainly you refer to Mr. Morrow and he talked about how much he enjoyed working with this council and the staff. We do work very, very well together and you should all be very proud of our accomplishments. We talked about the communication. I think communication has been absolutely incredible the last three or four years. We have that communique that is going out to all of our municipalities at the end of county council and that is very much appreciated. And it's also brought an awareness to members of our lower-tier municipalities about what the county of Renfrew actually does that they may not have known in the past. So again, thank you for all of that. I think we're in really good shape going forward and with your leadership, I think we're going to do very, very well. So with that, I will open up to council for questions. Counselor Donahue, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden, and through you to Mr. Kelly. Very much appreciate the review. I think that it also speaks volumes of the absolute requirement for each and every council to review the strategic plan. I'm not sure when this strategic plan was first developed. I know that it preceded Mr. Morrow. I was very pleased to have participated in the process in early 2019 when this council first sat. I think what it does is it brings focus to what we do in the room and I think that's invaluable in moving forward. And very much hopeful that I have a successful performance appraisal in 26 days because I really look forward to actually participating in the next phase. Very excited, looking forward to continuing to serve the needs of our community. So thank you for this. I think it's important by times to stop and take a look in the rearview mirror to see truly where you have come from and where you have arrived at. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Donahue, and I do hope your performance appraisal is good. Are there any other comments? Counselor Bros, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to Director Kelly. Excellent report. Certainly, it's really rewarding to see the successes that have been accomplished over the past four years. And I think if I was giving a report card for staff and council, it would be an A+. I mean, in spite of the challenges that COVID presented, it also presented opportunities which the staff certainly seized and a lot of the developments and improvements in delivery of service actually evolved out of COVID. So once again, I just want to say thank you to the great job and hopefully it continues. And I also hope I get a good performance appraisal myself.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bros. And I too hope you get a good performance appraisal. I hope everyone is out there. I mean, we basically had been a job interview for four years, so I think everybody's been a fantastic representative of the municipalities. Counselor Reinwald, please, sir.
Thank you, warden. I'd just like to say that I got a poor one because I got fired. I'm done at the end of the year. No, excellent report, I think, very, very well done. One of the things in there that has made our council in the town of Renshaw Hills very happy is the communique. The communique that was set out about, what, two years ago now, a year and a half ago? That has been asked for for some time and I knew it was in the program, but that's part of their reports now when they receive, you know, prior to our council meetings there. And they're very, very interested in it and they're very pleased to see it. So that certainly was, I felt, was, you know, was a very good piece of information for the local municipalities to see what we're actually doing here. So thank you very much for that and your staff.
Thank you. Counselor Reinwald, are there any other comments? Seeing none, we're taking it very easy on you today for your first CAO. We aren't either. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. And now turn the committee reports over to our Chair of Finance Administration Committee, Counselor Murphy, please, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And I should have said, when you asked for questions or comments from Craig, thanks for the trip down the hellish memory lane of the floods. Members of county council, we, your Finance and Administration Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information number one, we have county initiatives. Since Craig has become the CAO, there's a lot going on and they are listed below. Number two is Bill Three, the Strong Mayors Building Homes Act. There is in fact a letter or resolution from the town of Kingsville in disagreement and I hope that at your local municipalities, you will also support that. Under number three, as we've been talking about communications, congratulations to Tina Poplinsky for all of her amazing, the communique and getting information out to our local municipalities and all your social media posts. Under number four is the Provincial Offenses Administration backlog, as we see every month. Number five is the appointment of our external auditors. Since Scott, Rosine, Black and Locke would not be in a position to provide us with our auditing services, we are now engaged with KPMG and the information is below. Number six is under resolutions is Resolution Number FACC 22-09-83. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that county council approve the 2023 budget guidelines as follows. Annual levy increase of 2.5%. And that the county council also confirm the remaining elements of the long-term financial plan as follows. Restriction in the use of that levy increased to only 2.5% per year for operating expenses. Utilization of the annual current value assessment weighted growth into capital reserves at an estimate of 1.48%. New debt for projects in excess of $3 million. Annual provincial funding of at least $500,000. Annual federal gas tax funding of at least $2.6 million. And minimum capital reserve balance of $2 million. Resolution Number FACC 22-09-84. Moved by myself as Chair, seconded by Committee, that county council approve the cost of living allowance, COLA, increase for non-union staff under Employment Bylaw Number One be set at 2% for 2023. Resolution FACC 22-09-85. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that county council approve the 2023 budget schedule. And the background is there. Under bylaws, I have Resolution Number FACC 22-09-86. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that county council approve the new corporate policy, IT-12, electronic monitoring of employees and further that a bylaw to amend by law 62-03, being a bylaw to establish information, technology, corporate policies and procedures for the county of Renfrew be adopted. There was much discussion on this at Finance and Administration, and I'm sure there will be today. The background is there. And under our Employment and Family Assistance Program, Resolution Number FACC-22-09-87. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that county council adopt bylaw to enter into a service agreement with Inkblot Technologies, Inc., for an employee and family assistance program for a two-year period from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2024. And the background of that decision is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Bros, Doncaster, Donahue, Hunt, Peckett, Robinson and Sweet. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you very much, Chair Murphy. So we'll start at the beginning of your report under information. Item number one, county initiatives. Any questions or comments? Number two, Bill Three, Strong Mayors Building Homes Act. Number three, communications. Four, Provincial Offenses Administration backlog. Number five, the appointment of external auditors. Counselor Lynch, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just to say, KPMG out of Perth, the office used to be Allen &amp; Partners and they were our auditor for the town of Armpire for the past four years and have done a fantastic job. And now they've been incorporated to KPMG. So I'm assuming we'll have the same type of service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Lynch. And I'm quite confident that Mr. Foss is making sure that we're going to get the service that we require. Item number six, under resolutions, the 2023 budget guidelines. There's three resolutions. There are any comments? Seeing none. Under bylaws, item number seven, information technology, the corporate policies and procedures. And number eight, the Employee and Family Assistance Program. We definitely are, I'm sorry, oh, go ahead, Counselor Immon, please.
Yes, if I could just, I'm curious, is this a virtual platform or is there a virtual and in-person component to this? I may not have read the description properly.
I will, I could answer the question, but I'm going to let Mr. Foss do it. I just do want to, you know, we are realizing a significant saving here. And one of the conversations that did happen during the Finance Administration Committee is that we want to ensure that what we are saving in dollars, we're not somehow not providing the service that our employees need. So we've been guaranteed that that will be watched very closely. Mr. Foss, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. And through to Counselor Immon, the same question really arose at the Finance Administration Committee about levels of service. And through the request for proposal process, we wanted to do our very best to ensure that we had a like-to-like comparison. But there's no question in today's age that there's a number of modalities that are in place to support our employees through this EFAB program. Obviously, you know, telephone, virtual meetings via Zoom or Microsoft Teams. But what really caught our attention were the number of counseling staff that Inkblot Technologies had contracted with in the province of Ontario and specifically as locally as the city of Ottawa. And so our opportunity to have face-to-face, in-person counseling from qualified professionals, at least reaching out to the city of Ottawa was something we were very interested in. And not that that was the deciding factor, but it certainly assured us that they have options available to support our employees through any of those means. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foss. Are there any other further questions on item number eight? Seeing none, the report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Madam Warden.
Thank you. All in favor of the Finance Administration Committee report? Thank you very much. I'll turn it to Counselor Donahue, Chair of the Health Committee.
Thank you so much, Madam Warden. To the council of the corporation of the county of Renfrew, members of county council, we, your health committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one is the COVID-19 pandemic update. I will certainly go through, I'm not going to read the background information, it has been provided, but because this is so large, we'll certainly hit on each of the highlights therein. As of course, we still remain in COVID. Just yesterday, I sat at the Board of Health and in fact, of 63 deaths that have been recorded due to COVID in Renfrew County District, 52 of them have happened in 2022. Something about 95% of the cases of COVID have occurred in 2022. So it is important, of course, to keep in mind, even though that we have returned to some degree of normalcy, that COVID has not yet been some degree of normalcy, that COVID has not yet been defeated and rested to the ground. In any event, item one is the COVID-19 pandemic update with respect to long-term care. Item one is the homes outbreak status. I will certainly defer to Mr. Blackmore, should there be any questions, because this news has been changing probably on more than a weekly basis over the course of August and September, but very pleased at the current status and hopeful that we can put the outbreak status and that the threat of that behind us. The second item is Ontario's plan to stay open. The next item is Ministry of Long-Term Care funding. Very pleased at the rollout of this funding. The next item is public health guidance, and you will note that there is some substantial changes that have been rolling out from the Chief Medical Officer of Health and the Office of Public Health at the province. Next item is vaccine preparedness, following up the amendments to the PSW Permanent Wage Enhancement Funding Policy. This is very pleased at this and also very pleased at the revision that Mr. Blackmore has provided at Health Committee in response to a query with respect to the impact on budget, payroll, et cetera. It was, it was put forward at that time that the assumption was that this was going to be within the funding structure of long-term care. In fact, as council will note, this is to be financed and funded through the province of Ontario. Item two is copayment and preferred accommodation each year, because a component of the residency at long-term care is a residency, so similar to rent control, this is what the copayment for preferred accommodation is for the ensuing year. Item three is Merrimishy Lodge Living Classroom. Once again, you can see that it is consistent with Strategic Plan Goal Number Three. Item four, Director of Care, wish to extend congratulations to Mrs. Nancy Lemire as the Director of Care at Merrimishy Lodge. Ms. Lemire has been a longtime staff member at Merrimishy Lodge, very pleased to have her now in the role of Director of Care. Item five is the County of Renfrew Palliative Care. It is, once again, it has been consistent with the ethos of the paramedic service to be innovating constantly, and it is not just having notions, but it is being backed up with research papers on the efficacy. And you will note in reading this that there is a particularly large qualitative component to this, which is consistent with the larger environment that hopefully we are embracing in Ontario, that quality does not mean it is going to cost more money, it just has to be appropriately financed and funded, because I think it's in everybody's interest as much as possible to remain in their own homes, in their own communities, and this is consistent with that. I do encourage council to read that. Item six is with respect to the clinical assessment centers and the bivalent vaccine. I do want to note, council is probably aware at this point, that the bivalent vaccine has now, as of Monday of this week, been made available to all those in Ontario that are 18 and over, that is, have reached their 18th birthday or over. And similar to my preamble, Madam Warden, it is strongly encourage our community to get out and get the vaccines. There is, perhaps as we are moving farther away from the initial pangs of COVID in 2020, when we inhabited a world where vaccines did not yet exist, vaccines have gone a long way, even though I had cited the numbers for 2022, the number of cases that we have had in 2022 has dramatically surpassed that of any of the prior experience in COVID, and it is absolutely vaccine that has significantly diminished the burden of COVID, both to serious illness and hospitalization and ultimately to death. It has absolutely reduced and kept those down. And I say this because the area served in county and district, which of course is city of Pembroke County of Renfrew and township of South Algonquin, first and second doses are absolutely exemplary across our population of certainly 12 and over. It's in, I think it's around 85%, but it drops significantly even with the third doses. So I'll take advantage of the, my opportunity today to really encourage our community to get out there, to continue to, to keep the burden of COVID-19 low. Moving on then to item number seven, with respect to provincial models of care strategy and providing right care in the right place. Finally, Madam Warden, moving on to bylaws. Item number eight is the Fixing Long-Term Care Act, consistent with Strategic Plan Goal Number One. Resolution Number H-CC-22-09-82. Moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve policy G-011, declarations and police record checks under the Fixing Long-Term Care Act 2021, for the council members for the corporation of the county of Renfrew, including the city of Pembroke, representatives for the long-term care homes, Bonnisher Manor and Merrimishy Lodge, and further that a bylaw be passed. The background is attached. This did come forward to council a month or two ago, where there was certainly some concern raised that, that in fact, no members of council, whether on Health Committee or other, are in, we do not enter the long-term care homes, we do not have direct input into the long-term care. What this essentially is saying is that a certain record check is required for a small component of the role we fill, yet oddly enough, just to hold the office that would make one eligible to sit in this chamber, does not require that same sort of requirement. However, in pursuing this, as you are very much aware, Madam Warden, there was no yield with respect to the municipal sector in long-term care. So these will be coming forward, and as noted within the report, this information will be provided to lower-tier municipalities, so that any of the candidates that are running for position that will make them a county councillor, it is important that they have that information at their disposal. Item nine is the lease agreement between the County of Renfrew and Arnprior Regional Health. Resolution Number H-CC-22-09-84. Moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer Clerk to sign the lease agreement between the County of Renfrew and Arnprior Regional Health for ongoing tenancy of 275 Ida Street, Arnprior, the current location of the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center, RC VTAC. And Madam Warden, the background is attached for council, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, along with committee members Bennett, Doncaster, Emon, Grills, Love, Murphy and Warden Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chair Donahue. We'll start at the beginning of your report under information. Item number one is the COVID pandemic update and long-term care. There's a number of items there. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Item number two, the copayment and preferred accommodation. Three, Merrimishy Lodge Living Classroom. Four, the new Director of Care for Merrimishy Lodge. Five, County of Renfrew Palliative Care. Council Bros, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and I guess through you to Mr. Blackmore. I'm just curious, I did read in the report that some of the, or I'm sorry, I guess it wouldn't be Mr. Blackmore, it would be Chief Nolan. It indicated that some of the paramedics would require additional training. I'm just curious if that's just select members of staff, or is the intention that all of the paramedics would receive specialized training?
Thank you. Chief Nolan, please, sir.
Thank you, through Warden. That is all members of the paramedic service to receive specialized training. It may vary depending on their exposure and what their roles are particularly, but all staff are now better equipped as a result.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any further questions? Seeing none. Item number six, the clinical assessment centers. Number seven, the provincial models of care strategy. I would have liked them to refer to our county VTAC in there, but I'm sure that's what they were referencing. Item number eight, under bylaws, the Fixing the Long-Term Care Act. We tried our best folks. I wrote a scathing letter, but it didn't change anyone's mind. And number nine, the lease agreement with the County of Renfrew and Arnprior Regional Health. The report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Council Donahue. All in favor of the report as presented, carried. I will turn it over to Councilor Sweet, Chair of the Development and Property Committee, please, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much, Warden. Members of County Council, we, your Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. A number of information items. You see, the first item is Taste of the Valley, the first three events have taken place, and there's a father three events to take place in Deep River, Arnprior and Cobden, of course, where it all began many, many years ago. And I'm sure everyone's looking forward to those events. You see, the first three attracted some 4,000 visitors to the event, so pretty successful, I would have to say. Item number two is the Ontario Tourism Health Checklist. This is a document that indicates the number of individuals who have traveled up into Renfrew County. And while it's not specifically broken down by Renfrew County, it is regional in nature. And this is coming out as a result of now, hopefully, we've turned the corner on COVID, and we're seeing a much larger influx of individuals, certainly within Renfrew County. And hopefully, as we go forward, that will be zeroing in on what is actually happening in Renfrew County in future dates. Guidebooks, item number three, you see, the OVTA has been working with a couple of local authors, and you can see the guidebooks are talking in terms of what you can do and where you can go in the various communities within Renfrew County. And also, the first one is with Laura Beckett, and you can see the areas that are being covered there. And also, Arthur Ron Brown. Interesting, unusual things to see in Ontario, and you can see where they're focusing with that. Item number four is a culinary strategy. The OVTA has received funding from OTO, $58,000 for the development of a tourism strategy and culinary efforts. The total amount received now covers 100% of that. Item number five is spring and fall starter company intakes, and the detailed individuals or groups that you see there have been successful with their grant applications, and it's quite a cross-section, and quite a cross-section of the community of Renfrew County as a whole, so it's there for your information. Outreach partnerships, item number six, Small Business Week events, October the 16th to the 20th, in partnership with Future Community Futures Development Corporation, Auto Chamber of Commerce, Local Immigration and Renfrew and Area Chamber of Commerce. They include three virtual sessions and one in person. Item number seven, Flood Plane Mapping Initiative. I think that's very important, given what happened in 2018, 19, was it? Something, something, it seems so long ago that this happened, but the flooding, et cetera. So committee directs staff to make an application to NRCAN for flood hazard identification mapping, and if successful, they'll be bringing back for approval to this chamber. Item number eight is the recap of Bill 109, More Homes for Everyone and the Implications. Our planning group has been meeting on a regular basis with the lower-tier information, lower-tier communities to bring back some recommendations and input on the impact that Bill 109 has with, I think, solid feedback from them. I think of importance is the chart that's on page 77, that's detailing where you see some of the ramifications of the refunds that could be in place, and that was certainly a major concern for a lot of the lower-tier municipalities. But I think that's very useful information for the lower tiers to see it on, in one particular chart. And the background is there, I don't want to go through it all, but part of that will require an amendment to the OP to implement the changes that are required under the Planning Act on Bill 108, 109, I should say. You see resolutions there, Official Plan Amendment, OP Number 35, Resolution Number DPCC 2209-84. Moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council directs staff to initiate the application to consider the draft Official Plan Amendment, OP Number 35, in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act. And you can see the documents pertaining to that start on page 91. Warden, all of that is submitted by myself as Chair, members Emon, Keller, Lynch, Rieger, Reimold, yourself, and TJ.
Thank you very much, Council Sweet. So we'll start at the beginning of your report under information. Item number one, Taste of the Valley. Council Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just want to thank all that were involved in our first Taste of the Valley in the village of Eganville in Bonnisher Valley. It was very well attended. We had vendors that actually sold out, which is great news. So I just want to thank your entire department, Jason. I think that it'll be an even bigger success next year. We did have a couple of vendors pull out that morning because the weather was terrible, but it did clear up and made for a beautiful day, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Item number one, we still have Deep River, Arnprior and Cobden to attend. Item number two, the Ontario Tourism Industry Health Check. Number three, the Ottawa Valley being featured in guidebooks. Number four, the Culinary Strategy Development. Number five, the Spring and Fall Intake of the Starter Company. Number six, the outreach and partnerships, in particular, the planning for Small Business Week events. Number seven, the launch of the Flood Hazard Identification and Mapping Program. Number eight, the recap of Bill 109, More Homes for Everyone Act and the implications of it. There are many. The resolutions, number nine, the Ontario, official plan amendment, number 35. Council Donahue, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Just one question, I understand that this is the first step in another thousand-mile journey. It seems that we've been journeying on official plans now since I was taking my seat in this room. On the PDF, on the report to council, this is on page 80, in the second paragraph, it cites, "At this point, we are looking for council direction to move forward with initiating the OPA process." I wonder if through you, either the Chair or perhaps Mr. Davis, could give some indication of what steps are involved in the process, i.e. anticipated for public consultation, stakeholder engagement?
Director Davis, please, sir.
Excuse me, through you, Warden. If you see on page 79 of your committee package, a little further back in the next steps process, so what we have to do is, once we get committee, sorry, County Council's direction to move forward with this OPA, well, county staff will direct and circulate the amendment to all local municipalities, and then county will hold a statutory public meeting in County Council session to implement this. So if you're looking at timelines, we are looking at having a, hopefully, a public meeting at County Council, again, talking with CIO Kelly to firm up this timeline for the public open house and County Council session in December, if not in January, and then to finalize this in January. Thank you, Chair, or thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Are you okay with that, Council Donahue? Did you get your answer?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Item number- Item number nine, Counsel Hunt, please, sir.
Thank you, and through you too, Director Davis. Do you, it seems like with this process, and I like the fact that we're going into that, and I also like that the lower tiers have been part of the communication on this, there seems to be, the process will include more inquiries, and I'm just wondering, what will that do to the department? Because a few months ago, we talked about the backlog in the departments and inquiries being, you know, held off quite a long time. So what do you see this process doing as far as the backlogs? Will that enhance the backlogs within the department? And are there ways to circumvent that?
Director Davis, please.
Through you, Warden. So this will not improve the situation for backlogs? This will create another step in the process for staff to review and maybe upfront review a lot of these applications? But at the same time, County Council did direct our department to upstaff, so which we've done. We're at full complement right now, so we anticipate the backlog that you mentioned to be improving. We are improving month to month, and by the time this is implemented in January, we're hoping to have that backlog completed. Thank you.
Supplementary, Counsel Hunt.
Thank you, and through you again to Director Davis. I wonder, on a monthly basis, if a report should come to council about the backlog so that all the counselors are aware of the timeframe, you know, that lower-tier municipalities, developers, and so on should expect, and when we're approached by it, that we're a little more knowledgeable on that.
From my perspective, it sounds like a great idea. I don't know how much work is involved, but Director Davis, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to the counselor. So we'll endeavor to do that in our next committee package, and then have it as a monthly update to County Council and Development Property Committee.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any other questions? Item number nine. Seeing none, the report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Warden.
Thank you very much. All in favor of the report as presented? Thank you. Counsel Emon, do you have a 2023 Winters Games update at this point?
No, I don't, Warden. It's virtually remained the same. We're still just moving along, and there was nothing of substance I could add at this time. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Do you know how the sales are going of the hoodies and shirts and such?
I know, I know we've sold some items. I can't give you the exact number, but I think we're satisfied with the kickoff and would encourage everybody. We have some new styles coming early next month. Just looked at them last night and with my sense of style and taste, approved them. So fortunately, there are three other people on the committee, and I'm hoping to be overruled, and we'll have some good stuff.
All right. I definitely trust your fashion sense, so I'm looking forward to see what comes up. With that, I'll ask Counsel Pickett, Chair of the Operations Committee, to present his report, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Warden. Members of County Council, we, your Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, item one, the monthly project status report, attached as appendix one on page 116. Item two, the capital program variance report, attached as appendix two on page 117. County Road 512, Foimont Road construction update. Close cut clearing has been completed along County Road 512 from Miller Road to County Structure B257 Harrington Creek Bridge. Unfortunately, despite best efforts, the project has had several schedule setbacks. There's, for your information, in the next, for the following paragraph, there's a lot of the reasons why. I don't think I'll go through them. Staff will continue to endeavor to move the project forward as efficiently as possible. However, due to the delays already incurred, it is not anticipated that the road reconstruction will proceed in 2022. Item four, PWC 2022-47 Engineering Services for Reconstruction of County Structure 201 Brooms Creek Culvert and Dam. The RFP for this assignment was issued with the following results. JL Richards, the proposals, sorry, the proposals were evaluated in a range of criteria, including understanding of the assignment capabilities and project team, previous experience on a similar assignment strategy, methodology, and innovativeness of design and approach, schedule, and cost. The proposal submitted by JL Richards and Associates Ottawa, Ontario, was evaluated as the best combination of all factors considered. Though not the lowest cost proposed, JL Richards and Associates' proposal included much greater detail on the needs of the structure and the dam, as well as the timelines required for the studies prior to replacement of the dam. The 2022 capital budget included funds in the amount of $100,000 to complete the design of this structure and dam. Staff have reviewed the costs submitted in the proposal and confirmed that there are sufficient funds in the capital budget to complete this assignment as proposed in 2022. However, additional funds shall be required to be allocated in the 2023, in 2023, to complete the design assignment. Item five, county structures not meeting policy PWO2 criteria. This is an important thing, Warden. I'm going to take the time to read through this for the folks on video especially. At the June meeting of Operations Committee, two county structures, B232 Cochrane Creek Bridge and Structure C051 Harris Creek Bridge, were presented with, which were presented, which are scheduled for works in 2023 and do not meet criteria of the county's policy PWO2. Bridge design and construction. As per the policy attached in appendix three, all bridges under the jurisdiction and control of the county which cease to meet the definition of bridge after reconstruction shall return to the jurisdiction of the roadway. Authority upon completion of the construction and acceptance of the finished works by the county engineer. And furthermore, all bridge structures under the jurisdiction of the county must be situated on a public right-of-way which is maintained year-round and has a minimum average annual daily traffic volume of 100 vehicles. Both of these structures are located on seasonally maintained roads, which are far below the 100 volume of vehicles. Staff has provided the following options for considerations. Undertake removal of the structures on dead-end roads. Undertake design and construction. Download structure to local municipality. Undertake design and construction. Keep as a county structure and update the bridge policy. At the time of our committee, at that time, our committee requests the staff to provide a list of structures not meeting the criteria of policy PWO2. The list is attached as appendix four. There are 17 bridges located on local roads with daily traffic of less than 100, and five of these bridges are located on or at a transition to a seasonally maintained road. There are 38 structures, structure culverts located on local roads with annual daily traffic less than 100, and four of these structures are located on or at the transition to seasonally maintained roads. Our committee directed staff to continue with design of county structures, B3232 Cochrane Creek Bridge and Structures C051 Harris Creek Bridge, and to review and revise the bridge policy to better reflect current practices. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members Bennett, Hunt, Keller, Lynch, Robinson, and TJ.
Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Counsel Pickett. So we'll start at the beginning of the Operations Committee report. Item number one, the monthly project status report. Any questions or comments? Item number two, the capital program variance report. Number three, County Road 512 reconstruction update. The hands are flying. Counsel Murphy, please.
I think Counsel Donahue beat me at that, but thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to extend my thanks to Mr. Kelly, Mr. Perkins, and Taylor Hanraff for attending at Bonneishere Valley Council last Tuesday. I think, although this is still very disappointing, and our ratepayers are not very happy, there is an excellent write-up in the Eaganville Leader this morning about their delegation to our council to explain to council and our ratepayers why this project did not get done. I'd also like to extend the thanks for the hot mix that was put down. It does make certain portions of the road more drivable, although it's still dangerous. But again, I thank you, and I really respect and admire the fact that you came and were able to answer council's questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Murphy. And again, you know, communication is crucial when these things happen. Counsel Donahue, please, sir.
Thank you so much, Madam Warden. Through you to, in all likelihood, Mr. Perkins. So council was presented in the spring, Q2 in any event, at some point, that there was a delay at that time because of the relocation of the utilities. So we were aware of the relocation and the complications of that delay. Has that delay been increased, or is this still referring to that same delay?
Director Perkins, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to Chair. All the land acquisitions are now in place. The delay is still with the utility companies. They're working to relocate the power lines and the Bell things, but this is not the same delay as it was earlier in the season. We were delayed with land acquisitions. Now, all the land is in place, and we're just waiting on Hydro One and Bell.
Supplementary, Counsel Donahue.
It is, and I want to, I want to zero in a little bit more on that, though. We were advised that there would be a delay by the utilities. So I don't know, I did not review previous minutes or agenda packages, but I do not recall if they had given specific timelines before that they would be able to accommodate. I know that we did have a discussion of trying to accelerate their schedule. What I'm asking is, did they provide dates of when they would, and have they not actually met the dates that they had provided to us?
Director Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to Counsel Donahue. No, unfortunately, we haven't had to nail down solid dates yet. The excuse that Hydro One gives us right now is that they're still dealing with the windstorm that went through this summer. So I know Mr. Hanraff and his group are working diligently to nail down the dates. As you've seen, the close clear cutting has been completed. So really, right now, it's just a matter of those ladies and gentlemen getting in and relocating the poles, and then we can start next season with the rehabilitation of the road.
Counsel Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Final question, and it is following the same thread. Given that this is infrastructure of the county of Renfrew, it does seem untenable that those who are essentially utilizing the infrastructure of the county of Renfrew seem to have some influence on us being able to accommodate the work that is required of us from a health and safety perspective, from a asset management perspective. This is not speaking so much to what has been happening on 512, but whether any future utility use of any of the infrastructure of the county of Renfrew may have to have more precise, prescriptive elements towards the expectation. This is our property that they are utilizing, not the other way around, and this does give me some concerns on a moving-forward basis of our ability to do the work that is required of us in a timely fashion.
Thank you for those comments. I do believe that we actually did write a letter as well, asking for them to expedite their plans, to no avail, so that's unfortunate. Director Perkins, please, sir.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to council. That's correct. The Warden did send a letter, and also, a big thanks to the Township of Bonneishere Valley's mayor, Counsel Murphy, and her staff. They also, they went forward with a letter as well. One of the things to note here, 512 is a bit of a special project because of, there was much more realignment. So usually, normally, the county of Renfrew, we just stay within the road base that's there. So unfortunately, with the, with the relocations of five, with the relocation of the right-of-way of 512, this is what caused us conflict with the utilities. Again, this is something that Taylor and his team and myself have discussed, and they are now looking deep into the asset management plan to make sure that there's no more hiccups or trips like this that could catch us in the future.
Thank you very much, Director Perkins. Is there any other further questions on item number three? Counsel Sweet, please.
Sorry, Warden, if I could go back to item, the status report, I missed that. I'd just like a bit of an update, if I could, on County Road 51 and the status. Is it going forward smoothly? Is it on target, opening day, and all that sort of stuff? It is the main road in and out of the garrison, and so far, we haven't had, certainly not at our office, a lot of complaints or concerns. So I just want to make sure that it's, that it's coming online the way it's supposed to be, and is scheduled to be complete sometime October, November. I know our Director of Operations speaks with your team as well, but I just want to make sure that, that when I meet with the base, that I'll be able to give them the information.
Director Perkins, can you give us an update on County Road 51?
Thank you, Madam Warden. There's no current work being done on County Road 51 that I'm aware of, other than the water.
Pardon me, the bridge?
Oh, sorry, oh, the bridge, yes, sorry, my apologies.
It's one and the same as far as we're concerned.
Yes, my apologies, yeah. No, actually, from our latest onsite meeting last Wednesday, they are still on track to complete before November 11th, so we're hopeful that they will. They've given us no indication that they're not, so knock wood, they should be, they should be out there about the middle of November.
All right, thank you very much. So that's actually quite important, November 11th. It's a, it's a big day at the garrison and that location as well for Petawalla, the Legion is right there, so hopefully, they make that deadline. Item number four, the engineering services for the reconstruction of county structures. Counsel Donahue, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. To drill in so that I have clarity on this, so it essentially, the report is suggesting that there is more work that will be budgeted in 2023. However, was it anticipated that it would be a two-year budget, or was the $100,000 that was budgeted for this anticipated to be the cost of the preliminary bridge design work?
Excellent question. I think somebody on, in that committee actually asked the same question. Director Perkins, please, sir.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden, and you would be correct. A fine young lady in our operations committee did ask this question. This is, this was definitely considered because the bridge became, became another structure with the dam attached to it, as you may remember from years ago. So this was planned for a two-year design cycle, so there'll be $100,000 spent this year, and Taylor and his group and during budget 2023 will carry the rest of the money into the next year for design.
Counsel Donahue, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, so of course, the budget is only just now beginning to get underway with respect to the departmental budgets. Projecting then, so this was budgeted for 100, it's coming in at 224, is the 224 784, is that anticipated to be the full cost over the two years, or are we anticipating further cost to come forward in 2023?
Director Perkins, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. No, that's correct. That's, that's the number we will hold JL Richards to for the next two years.
Then, final question, Madam Chair. Is this still within what the expectation was? And the reason that I am asking these questions is because of the discussion, the presentation that Mr. Hanraff provided to County Council at our August meeting with respect to the potential savings that could be realized with more engineering services being done within the staff component. So I am curious if this is within what the expectations was, were of the two-year commitment.
Thank you much, Counsel Donahue, and that actually was discussed as well, and the request was that ongoing, when the operations report is presented, to indicate if we had those changes in staffing, would we be doing some of that in-house? But I'll let Director Perkins. But I'll let Director Perkins answer.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to council. This is an example of one that we would not be able to do in-house because of the complexity of the structure itself, but as the warden just alluded to, from going forward on our operations committee, we are going to note on all the projects which project we could have done in-house, potentially, with the, with the realignment going forward.
Counselor Donahue.
Thank you. That did, in fact, address part of the question. The other question was within our asset management plan, presumably, the engineering work was estimated for it in its completion. What's complicating this right now is because it's spreading over two years. What I'm trying to arrive at is, is the $225,000 within the expectations of the preliminary work, $100,000 of which, of course, was budgeted this year?
I'm not sure. Are you asking that question again, because I, it sounds like...
So ultimately, we are going to approve $224,000 for something that was budgeted at 100. The answer is that part of these will actually be expended next year, but it seems like we're awarding it this year. As I understood, we do not, we expect this to be the complete amount of money spent on the preliminary work. We're spending it all this year rather than in 2022. Perhaps I am mistaken.
Director Perkins.
I will, thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to council. I will have to look into that and provide more information. We pay on a progress payment schedule. We don't pay, you know what I'm saying? Like, if they do $100,000 worth of work between now and December 31st, that's what they'll get, but no more.
Counselor Donahue.
Final, Madam Warden, what I'm trying to arrive at, it was certainly understandable why our large capital expenditure in 2022 saw substantial overage. In fact, we had to revise and we pushed some of the projects down the road. We did that because of the enormity of supply chain, et cetera. If this is engineering issues, I'm questioning, are we getting $225,000 bill for something that we thought was going to cost us $100,000?
Director Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Warden. In the original asset management plan, this structure was assumed to be just a culvert. So once we began engineering, pre-engineering on it, I believe, three years ago, it was ascertained that there was a dam attached to it. So what we're talking about for council is Forrester Falls. So going forward, JL Richards were actually the proponent at the time that were doing the studies for us on the culvert. We ascertained that we now attained a dam as well, so the design costs have, well, as you can see, went up substantially. We did originally budget $100,000 in 2022 for engineering costs on that structure, knowing full well now that it's going to cost 224,000. We've left $100,000 in 2022. We will now budget 124,784 in 2023 to cover the entire cost of it. But it is definitely an increase in design costs due to the complexity that we found that we, we gained a dam.
I'm looking at you, Counselor Donahue. Do you want one more shot at this?
I was looking right back, Madam Warden. Ultimately, so I do understand now, thank you, through you to Mr. Perkins, appreciate that, which does now beg the question is, and I do understand that when each of our own lower tier, plus the county of Renfrew, plus all 440 municipalities across the province, were engaged in developing asset management plans in, in the term of council, 210 to 2, through 2014, that there was probably some time pressure and sensitivity. So ultimately, where that gets me is, we are seeing $124,000 additional expenditure because there was something else attached to this. So it probably would behoove us in moving forward on our asset management plan to ensure that there are no more of these monsters at the edge of the map.
I'm fairly confident to say that Director Perkins and Taylor are making sure there are no monsters, and if there are, they'll find them. Item number five, county structures not meeting the policy. And of course, we will be receiving revised policy brought back, bridge policy brought back to committee. Counselor Donahue.
I do note that the final line, so it's not to belabor this, because I will wait and see what that bridge policy may say. If, I'm sure council will have noted that this policy, PWO-2, is dated 2008. I'm not sure how many were sitting in this room. I know certainly Counselor Sweet has, on multiple occasions, made reference to the who does what at the time that the province was downloading and uploading. So too were upper-tier governments downloading and uploading. Within my community, the Bar Line and the Mixburg Road were county roads. They are now township roads. So where I'm going with this line of thought is, 2008 is when this was changed. I'm sure the size of these, these infrastructure, be they bridges or culverts, was known at the time of the downloading and uploading. I'm assuming that the average annual daily traffic counts were reasonably known at that time, too, and yet here we find ourselves clearly with structures that did not meet this. So where I'm going with this is, I anticipate that there was some substantial discussion and horse trading at the time that these things were uploaded and downloaded. And I think it's imperative in, in coming up with the review of this policy to dig as far back in the archives as, as staff can possibly find, because I think that that might be instructive. When you see this in the chart form that it's in, one is left scratching their head, well, these obviously do not meet the standards, but it is the standard that 2008 policy is putting forward. So I think it's very vitally important to move forward with that. The other thing is mostly clerical. You will note within the report, it says not meeting the definition. The definition of a bridge is very simple, it's three meters or it's not. The other thing is contained, that is, the average annual daily traffic count component is not within the definition, is within the implementation. So just to be very clear, the definition of a bridge is going to be that three meters. So that's not precisely what is being reviewed also. There are other components, whether they were initially part of it or whether they were introduced in 2008, I am not in a position to suggest, but that's where I think it's incumbent upon staff to go right back to the end on, obviously, a couple of these are within my municipality, but according, across the whole of the list, I think almost everybody in this room has something. So I don't know what my predecessor that sat in this room might have said, okay, well, if that's coming down, i.e. the Bar Line and this proven line structure is right adjacent to the Bar Line, I don't know what the discussions were at that time, and I think it is very fraught if there are agreements put in place at the time of these uploads and downloads that then the rules change afterwards. It gives me some uncertainty and some concern that we may be walking on quicksand as we are making these deals. So highly encourage that we go well back into the archives to check what the policy was.
Thank you, Counselor Donahue. I'm sure it's duly noted. Counselor Emo, please.
Thank you. Just a little context, there was an attempt in, I believe, 2012 to change the, the bridges and culverts policy, and it, it flamed out as a lot of the rural municipalities felt that it was unfair to drop, I think, $50,000 cash and, and the structure in their laps. And so I would suggest that might be a problem again in the future. I would ask a question, though. The Mountain Shoe Bridge, I know that there are, there is legislation which allows for boundary road agreements between adjoining municipalities and adjoining counties. The Mountain Shoe Bridge essentially just services North Frontenac and a handful of outdoor toilets and two or three cottages, and a substantial amount of crown land which North Frontenac gathers revenue from because they have leases and tenting licenses for people. So I'm wondering, is there any kind of a mechanism within the, within the boundary road legislation which would cover that bridge? Because it is essentially a bridge to nowhere, and, you know, there's snowmobile traffic, ATV traffic across it, but it, for the most part, it services North Frontenac. As I said, there's several outdoor toilets and two or three cottages, and not much else. And so I'm wondering if there's a potential for them to share the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask C.O.L. Kelly to respond, please.
Thanks, Warden. I mean, it's simple, and through you to Counselor Emo, the simple answer is we'll look into it, we'll check legislation, and we'll pursue it further with, with Frontenac County and bring a report back to committee.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on item number five? Counselor Keller, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And yeah, I know we did have some, there was quite a bit of discussion at this, at our last operations committee meeting, and of course, the downloading aspect, and I know I'll be watching this closely once I'm done in these chambers, and, you know, whoever replaces me here, I'll be watching, because 25, 13% or 25% of those structures are in BLR, and with replacement costs of over $5 million, so there's no way we can afford to take over those bridges. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Keller, and I'm sure that you would be very welcome to come back in the chambers as a delegation, should that occur. Are there any other further comments? Counselor Peck, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden. Just to reiterate the C.O.L.'s comment on, on the bridge Counselor Emo brought up, certainly, Mr. Perkins and our committee will, will look into that. But the, I just want to make a comment on what the discussions were in our committee as Counselor Keller alluded to. We had a very lengthy discussion on this, and we're really going to be looking at, at an updated bridge and county structures policy, mainly becau, well, because it needs to be done, but also there's been precedent set in the not-so-distant past for the county. And when precedent has been set, I think in discussions with committee that, that we will be probably bringing back to county council a completely different, well, not completely different, but a different way of handling bridges in areas such as Counselor Keller's area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, because we're very obvious it could bankrupt a municipality if suddenly you have to provide all the funding for these structures. All right, are there any other further questions? Counselor Bennett, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden. This one, the mayor is very correct in saying that it was in 2008. I will say that I happen to be one of the ones in the chamber that was very active at the time, although not sitting in this chamber. I was very vocal with our mayor at the time to get it back up there as quickly as we can. We had the Township of Harton-Colbert on Thompson Road out. It was out for eight months because it wasn't settled, and we couldn't possibly do it as a community. And it took eight months to get that road back open again, with a lot of people very upset with council, very upset with the fact that we had a road, the culvert collapsed because of damage from a storm, and that we, we couldn't get it up and running again. I feel that this has to be looked at in depth, like I said at the operations meeting, so that we know exactly what these roads affect, not just put a figure down that 100 cars need to go by in a day. That's just a stroke of a pen. We need to look at it in reality, and we got to look at it in a way that is fiscally responsible for the county. And certainly, we can't, as a lower-tier municipalities, accept a download that great to Renfrew County. It's, it's just not in the works, and we all know that, that the prices that we're looking at today is only what we're looking at today, because if, if it's 10 years from now, it might be double the figure. So I, I think there's a great deal of review needs go into this, along with council and lower-tier council, too. I need, I think the upper staff needs to see for their eyes what they're actually looking at, and they need to communicate with the councils of the townships. Because it all boils down to there's 17 municipalities here. At some point, at least three-quarters of us are going to have the issue that we have something that we need the county to give its hand with, and I think it needs to be boiled down to the fact that what really needs to be done is, has to be done, and it has to be done in cooperation with the, with the government. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Counselor Bennett. Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I couldn't agree with Counselor Bennett more. I also, you know, I'm sure all of us did this, maybe not Glenn Doncaster, because he's not on this list, but I think all of us probably added up what would happen in our own municipalities. And all I could think was, these structures are included in the county of Renfrew Asset Management Plan. They are not included in our local-tier Asset Management Plan, and I don't know how we would start including them, especially if some of these structures are slated for 2024, 20, I mean, like, when I look at the different dates and the cost, I don't see how they could be downloaded, and I think it would be very unfair, not only to my municipality, but to all of the local-tier municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm pretty sure if we took a vote right now, I know where the vote would go, but we'll see with the new council and the new, and the new policy, correct? Yeah. Anyway, anything further? Oh, Counselor Doncaster, weigh it in.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I would, I would start with agreeing that, yes, I believe this policy should be looked at, not only for structures, but for county roads itself. And as somebody said earlier, it needs to be looked at in a fiscal, fiscally responsible way. The town of Deep River pays about $1.6 million in property taxes to the county of Renfrew, and then payment and lieu on top of that, $2.6 million in total. We have about 3-point-something kilometers of county roads in our municipality, acknowledging that the county provides a whole lot of services that are covered under the county levy, but a great deal of, of the county's money goes towards roads and bridges and structures. And arguably, all of those roads, bridges, and structures are available to all the residents of Renfrew County, but I suspect that there's a few of the ones that we're talking about that a resident of my municipality has never traveled across in the history of Renfrew County. Could be wrong on that one, but... And having said that, the, the way that, that, that all of this work is funded, I don't believe is fairly distributed around the county. There are municipalities that sit in this room that probably 75% of their roads are county roads, covered off by the county, and that's not true in, in every area of Renfrew County. So, yeah, a review of this whole policy will probably be good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, the report as a whole, do I have a mover?
So moved, Warden.
Thank you very much. All in favor of the operations report? Carried. It is. Okay, I've just been told that lunch is here, so we're going to take a break, and we will reconvene at 1:00. Can you take us offline, please? Can you take us offline, please?
Please be seated. So I hope everyone enjoyed their lunch and we're going to begin this afternoon. I'm going to ask for a mover and a second to amend the agenda and to put the FCM report at 1:00 today. Moved by Counselor Emo, seconded by Counselor Murphy. All in favor? Thank you. Counselor Doncaster has to leave, so with that, Counselor Doncaster, can you give us your report, please, sir?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think I've mentioned before that at the annual conference this year, I was elected to the Board of Directors of FCM. And I've been appointed to the two standing committees, the Anti-Racism and Equity Committee, Environmental Issues and Sustainable Development Committee, and the International Relations Committee, that along with the Committee of the Whole, of course, the Board of Directors, and the Rural Forum. At our September sessions of the Board of Directors that were held in Strathcona County, Alberta, two weeks ago, I was acclaimed as one of the vice chairs of the Rural Forum. So thank you for that. They did our committee meetings a little bit differently this year. We did in advance of the board meeting week. We did some of the committee meetings virtually and then followed up in person when we were in Strathcona County. I'm just going to highlight a few things from the new committee that I haven't sat on before. I've sat in some of their meetings in the past, but I wasn't a member of the committee, which is the Anti-Racism and Equity Committee. This committee was created just well, in March, just over a year ago, in March of 2021, the board created this committee. And then through July, August, September of 2021, the terms of references were created, the committee membership was confirmed, and then a draft work plan was created. And that work has continued through from January to today in 2022. Just a few highlights from the draft work plan. There was a number of recommendations put forward. And the first one is that when it comes to anti-racism, equality, diversity, inclusionary principles, that learning is a foundation. So that, and then there's background that goes with that. Number two is that the Anti-Racism and Equality Committee is, will be drafting and has drafted an FCM commitment statement, and I will review that in a minute. The third recommendation is that we get together best practices toolkit that we'll be able to share with everyone and that the committee is going to review, along with the Governance Working Group, the title called Equitable Governance, which is going to look at all of FCM's policies and practices to ensure that all of these processes are there, there's a filter or a, I'm forgetting the term right now, but an equity lens that is put into all of these policies and programs. So, and last but not least is a measuring, a measuring process and a report on the progress of how this evolves over time. There was a fair bit of conversation around this is because how do you measure this? How do you know that even if you're using an equity and inclusion filter on your policy or on your decision, how do you actually know, how can you step back and actually evaluate whether the outcome of that decision-making process would have been different? It's very difficult, so we're trying to work on that. So I would, and the one thing that we did spend a lot of time on at committee and at the board itself was the FCM commitment statement. And I won't read the whole thing, but I do want to highlight part of it, if I could find it. find it. I'm not sure where it went. And as I mentioned, this went through quite a lengthy discussion at committee and then at, at the Board of Directors itself. So, there is some background. And I will, the, those five recommendations that I just mentioned, as long as, well, the work plan's not that interesting. But certainly, this, the FCM Anti-Racism and Equality Commitment Statement, I think is really important. And one of the other things that we discussed is, is creating a template and customizing this for municipalities to be able to use. This is specific to FCM, and there is some background. And I will share this, along with the, the five other recommendations that came forward. But, and I'm just going to read part of this. So our, and this is FCM, so our commitment, at all levels of FCM, we commit to grounding our culture, systems, policies, and practices in, in an intersectional anti-racism and equality lens to challenge issues of race and correct inequities in order to reflect, reflect and improve the lives of communities across Canada. And there's, there's more to the statement than that. And I think, I think it's probably best that I, I share the, the statement with everybody so that they can read it. But as, as the discussion went on, certainly at committee and, and at the Board, there was, there was a lot of discussion around the statement and the background behind the statement. It's over a page long, and so a lot of people thought it was too long. A lot of things, a lot of, there was, not a lot, but there was some few people that said it was too harsh, acknowledging things that have gone on in our country in the past. However, after about an hour and a half discussion, I reminded everybody of, of this statement. The work of combating racism will not be easy. And we will read, we will recognize, and we recognize, it will be uncomfortable, complex, and deeply personal and humbling. We recognize the work of unlearning and relearning is a dynamic process. And that dialogue and action is an ongoing commitment. With these initial steps, we are starting this necessary work through various avenues to drive meaningful outcomes. We know there is much more that needs to be done to ensure long-lasting change, and our entire membership and organizations are committed to this work ahead. So I will share the, the entire statement. I can't do, the conversations that we had at committee and FCM Board of Directors, I can't do this justice in, in 10 minutes of, of just reviewing this. But there will be certainly more on this, and I'm very pleased to be on this committee and, and certainly more than pleased to share this information with all of County Council. And next month, I'll review some of the things we've done at, at, at a different committee. So what I'm going to try to do on a monthly basis is pick one of the committees that I'm sitting on and issues that are relevant to the County of Renfrew and the local municipalities here and, and report on that to County Council. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Doncaster. I'm sure, you know, once you have the, the document to Rose, she will share it with us. And certainly there may be an opportunity going forward to have more discussion around that statement in itself and how applicable it is perhaps to the County of Renfrew. Are there any questions of councillor Doncaster? Okay. I do appreciate you providing the report early. I know that you have to leave, and I didn't want us to miss anything of the information you had for us today. So with that, I will turn it over to councillor Brose, Chair of the Community Services Committee.
Thank you, Madam Warden. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew and members of County Council, we, our Community Services Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one is the demolition and rebuild of 202, 202 Cecil Street in Pembroke. And you will note in the background information that this was a single-family home. It's in a state of very poor repair. It has been vacated, and the plan is to demolish it and rebuild it with, as a duplex, to create one more affordable rental unit. Item number two is the Canada-wide Early Learning and Child Care System Update. Again, the information is attached, and it's just a, a pretty much progress report on the implication of this, or the implementation of this new childcare and funding agreement with the province. Moving on to resolutions, item number three is Draven Alert System Resolution Number CSCC-22-08-52, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved the following resolution regarding expanding the Amber Alert System. Whereas the Amber Alert System is an effective method of communication for people living in Renfrew County in assisting to locate abducted children who are at risk of imminent harm. And whereas the Amber Alert System does not apply to children who go missing and have not been abducted. And whereas the tragic death of 11-year-old Draven Graham brings to light the need for an alert system for vulnerable children who go missing under circumstances that do not involve an abduction but are at serious risk of injury or death. Now therefore be it resolved that the County of Renfrew request the Minister of the Solicitor General and the Commissioner of the Ontario Provincial Police, as well as the Premier's Office, be requested to expand the Amber Alert System by creating a new alert called the Draven Alert, which will protect vulnerable children who have not been abducted but are at high risk of danger, injury, death, or alert the public that they are missing. Item number four is Kira's Law, Resolution Number CSCC-22-08-53, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. That County Council approve the following resolution regarding expanding Bill C233, 233, Kira's Law. Whereas Kira's Law is named after four-year-old Kira Kagan, who was killed while in the custody of her father in 2020. And whereas, according to the National Judicial Institute, there is no mandatory education for judges on domestic violence. A formal education program would ensure another line of defense for victims, as well as preventing violence and abuse before it happens. And whereas voting in favor of Kira's Law, contained in Private Members Bill C233, will not only protect victims of violence and children, it will save lives by amending the Judges Act to establish seminars for judges on intimate partner violence and cohesive control. And be it resolved that the County of Renfrew support Private Members Bill C233, Kira's Law, and calls upon the House of Commons to support Member of Parliament Andrew Gillian's Private Members Bill C233, that will raise the level of education on domestic violence and cohesive control for federally appointed judges. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Right Honourable Justin Trudeau, Prime Minister of Canada, the Honourable Karina Gould, MP, Minister of Families, Children and Social Development, and Honourable Pierre Polivier, Leader of the Conservative Party of Canada, Y. Francois Blanchette, MP, Leader of the Bloc Quebecois, Jagmeet Singh, MP, Leader of the New Democrat Party, and MP, MP Cheryl Galant. And the background again is attached. Item number five, upcoming changes to the Ontario Disability Support Program, Resolution Number CSCC-22-09-65, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. That County Council approve that the Warden send a letter that outlines the current rates of Ontario Works financial support per residence in Ontario compared to other rates across Canada, and provide comment on how that relates to the current inflation rate and other economic realities in Ontario. Again, the background information is attached. Item number six, bylaws, amendment to bylaw 13-15, County of Renfrew Child Care Service Agreements, Resolution Number CSCC-22-09-62, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approve that bylaw number 13-15, authorizing the County of Renfrew to enter into an agreement with licensed childcare providers for the purpose of childcare services be amended to enter into an agreement with the following childcare agencies, the Armpryor Heritage Child Care Centre and the Deep Roots Nature and Nursery School. Once again, the background information is attached. Item number seven is the amendment to bylaw 14-15, County of Renfrew Special Needs, Resolution Number CSCC-22-09-63, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. County Council approve that bylaw number 14-15, authorizing the County of Renfrew to enter into an agreement with childcare agencies and recreation programs for special needs resource funding be amended to enter into a special needs resourcing agreement with the following childcare agencies. And once again, it's the Armpryor Heritage Child Care Centre and Deep Roots Nature and Nursery School. Background is there. And finally, an amendment to bylaw 15-15, County of Renfrew Wage Enhancement Agreements, Resolution Number CSCC-22-09-64, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. That County Council approve that bylaw number 15-15 be amended to enter into wage enhancement agreement for the purpose of receiving wage enhancement grant funding with the following childcare agencies, the Centre Educa-Cur Desunes and the Deep Roots Nature and Nursery School, and I apologize for my poor French. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Grills, Love, Vergier, Ryan Wald, and Warden Robinson. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Brose. So we'll start the beginning of your report under information item number one, the demolition and rebuild of 202 Cecil Street in Pembroke. Any comments, questions? Item number two, the Canada-wide Early Learning and Child Care System Update Funding Agreement. Three, the Draven Alert System. Four, Kira's Law. Councillor Donoghue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I wonder if item four could be severed from the report and considered separately?
So you're making that motion as your second or?
I am, thank you.
Second or to sever item number four. Councillor Emo, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Item number five, the Changes to ODSP and the Assistance for Children with Severe Disabilities Programme. Both of those programs are getting a 5% increase, and Ontario Works is getting zero. For anybody who's interested, your Ontario Works should make in a grand total of $730 a month. I don't know how you live on that. So, I'll be writing a letter. Bylaws, number six, County of Renfrew Child Care Services Agreement. Number seven, the amendment to the Renfrew, County of Renfrew Special Needs Resourcing Agreement. And, oh, I'm sorry, councillor Murphy, please.
And I applaud this initiative, but we certainly need this all over the County of Renfrew, not just into jurisdictions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. But I do believe that we provide resource funding throughout the County of Renfrew, not just into... I'm sorry?
Just not enough.
No, I suppose there's never enough. There's, I don't think we're sitting on any extra money, put it that way.
I don't know, I don't know about a Warden. Laura, are you sitting on a nest egg?
And number eight, the County of Renfrew Wage Enhancement Agreement. The report is whole, as a whole, except for item number four. Seeing none, do I have a mover?
So moved, Madam Warden.
Thank you very much. Approval of the report with number four separated. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. I'm assuming councillor Donoghue, you have something to say about item number four?
I do, Madam Warden. Thank you. I much appreciate the opportunity to, to give voice to this because, as I indicated in the past, the minutes will not reflect this, but certainly the recording of this meeting will reflect this, that I am not inherently opposed to this. I'm presuming, even within the preamble, the context of the resolution, it is perhaps not cryptic, but not extensive. I'm presuming that the, the line with respect to this young woman being killed while in the custody of her father had something to do with that. I'm unfamiliar with the case. The, I do not know what the National Judicial Institute is, and no information is forthcoming. And my only question here is, of course, I am, as would any reasonable person, be concerned with the, the health and wellbeing of, of children or anybody that is vulnerable in our community. But I do wonder, is a formal education ruled out for the multiple things that judges may be experiencing in their courtrooms? I suspect perhaps within family courts, there are specific judges. I don't know if this is part of the, the process of becoming a judge. I do not know if they, if this is typical, that they have webinars. So I'm, I'm very cautious about identifying a particular segment where judges should have a formal education. Not knowing any, anything about the system and whether this is consistent with what is the expectation, I am at this point hesitant to, to endorse this resolution. And once again, it is not because I am unconcerned, that is not it at all. It is that we are wading into a judicial system through which I know nothing. So for that reason alone, I cannot be in support of this.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments, councillor Donoghue. Director Lapine, can you share any information that you have, perhaps?
Thank you. And through you, Warden, to County Council. This was a, an outcry due to a young girl who was killed while in presence of her father, where there were many domestic assaults identified with the mother. And what came about was a plea for the judicial system to have more extensive training on what happens with domestic assault and coercive control, and how it impacts more than just the victim, in this case, the mother, that it actually has impact to children. Because the result, as identified, was that this child was killed while in the presence of her father. There has been several petitions across Canada seeking signatures on this, and we brought it forward through community services because there has been some other resolutions at other councils and, and such garnering support. But in terms of other judicial training, I don't have the full knowledge of what the different judicial training requirements are for other types of courts or other types of circumstances. I know this is a very specific case, and they're looking for very specific training to hopefully provide judges with more extensive knowledge so that when they're making decisions on whether a child should go into the care of a parent who has been charged with assault and coercive control, that they understand the implications and possible harms and risks. I can certainly get more information on this in terms of judicial training in this area, but I, at this point in time, that's the most information I do have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Lapine. Councillor Donoghue?
Just in following up, and again, it's, it is simply consistent with what I have already stated, Madam Warden, in that I'm presuming in a, a court of competent jurisdiction and proper authority that, that what I'm hearing is, is certainly the inference is that this was not at the hands of the father, but while the father was in custody, in, in, had the custody of the child, I'm uncertain. But in any event, with respect to, to the prevalence of violence that may have been the case within this particular issue, I certainly would have an expectation that that must have come forward through the court system as well during custody hearings, et cetera. So, once again, this is a tragic death, but I do wonder, was this not part of the presentations that were being made in the custody dispute between mother and father? I'm presuming that this evidence had to have been introduced into the public realm. So, in any event, I will, I certainly have to stand on what I had suggested.
All right, thank you very much for that. So I have Resolution number CSCC twenty-two dash zero-eight dash zero-five. I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor...
Dash five-three, Madam Warden.
Pardon me?
Dash five-three.
I'm sorry.
You said zero-five.
Okay, thank you, dash five-three. So moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Murphy. Any further discussion? Counselor Lynch, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. In that Director Lapine has said she'd get more information, could we defer this?
If you, are you making a motion to table this or defer it or...
Yes, I'd like the motion to defer to Director Lapine's further information on the judicial system. Thank you.
All right, so now I need a, do I have a seconder? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Donahue. Any further discussion? So are voting on deferring this resolution? All in favor of deferral? Okay, it's carried. Thank you. So we will defer it to the next Community Services Committee? I'm assuming that's where we will go next with this?
To a future meeting.
Yes.
Be the next one or a future one?
Okay, next one or a future one? Future's a long way. Okay, anyway. All right, thank you for that. I now need a mover and a seconder to go into a closed meeting pursuant to section two-thirty-nine of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, as amended, for advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, as the COGCO agreement, and B, information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province, or territory, or a crown agency, integrated community housing. A mover and a seconder going to close. Moved by Counselor Donahue, seconded by Counselor Hunt. All in favor? Carried. Please let me know when we are offline.
All right. Thank you very much. We are now back in open session. All right. Thank you very much. We are now back in open session. I have a resolution All right. Thank you very much. We are now back in open session. I have a resolution I have a resolution coming out of closed, and it's a bylaw that the County Council passed coming out of closed, and it's a bylaw that the County Council passed a bylaw approving coming out of closed, and it's a bylaw that the County Council passed a bylaw approving a bylaw approving the terms of the fiber optic agreement once finalized between Kojiko the terms of the fiber optic agreement once finalized between Kojiko Connection, Inc. the terms of the fiber optic agreement once finalized between Kojiko Connection, Inc. Connection, Inc. and the County of Ranford. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Councillor Reinhold, seconded by Councillor Riguer. Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Moved by Councillor Reinhold, seconded by Councillor Riguer. Any further comment? Seeing I now would ask for a mover and a seconder. That bylaws listed on item 13 and attached none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. here to is Schedule A on the County Council agenda, dated September the 28th, 2022, be I now would ask for a mover and a seconder. That bylaws listed on item 13 and attached deemed read three times and passed, and that does include the bylaw that we just passed. here to is Schedule A on the County Council agenda, dated September the 28th, 2022, be Moved by Councillor Murphy, seconded by Councillor Lynch. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in deemed read three times and passed, and that does include the bylaw that we just passed. favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Moved by Councillor Murphy, seconded by Councillor Lynch. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in Reports from external boards. Councillor Aimo. I know the board is meeting next week. favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Do you still have a report?
No, we have nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Reports from external boards. Councillor Aimo. I know the board is meeting next week. Eastern Ontario Regional Network.
All we had this month was finance. Our meeting is also next week.
Do you still have a report?
No, we have nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we have heard from Councillor Doncaster. Roma, Councillor Aimo. Eastern Ontario Regional Network.
All we had this month was finance. Our meeting is also next week.
Our meeting again is October 14th, I believe. Roma did attend and set up a booth at the
Thank you. And we have heard from Councillor Doncaster. Roma, Councillor Aimo.
International Flying Match, was well received, had the opportunity to meet with a couple Our meeting again is October 14th, I believe. Roma did attend and set up a booth at the of ministers, and also Senator Rod Black, who represents rural Ontario or rural Canada International Flying Match, was well received, had the opportunity to meet with a couple in the Senate. So it was a very fruitful meeting. of ministers, and also Senator, Senator Rod Black, who represents rural Ontario or rural
Thank you very much for that. Any questions of Councillor Aimo? Councillor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I look forward to Councillor Aimo's written report from
Canada in the Senate. So it was a very fruitful meeting.
Roma.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions of Councillor Aimo? Councillor Donahue.
Yes.
And ju- wait, if I may, Madam Warden, just to Councillor Donahue's point, there's
Thank you, Madam Warden. I look forward to Councillor Aimo's written report from Roma.
Yes.
no point in me doing a finance report when it's not ratified by the board. So that's And ju- wait, if I may, Madam Warden, just to Councillor Donahue's point, there's why I didn't have a written report.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I assumed. Mr. Kelly, are there any notice of motions?
no point in me doing a finance report when it's not ratified by the board. So that's why I didn't have a written report.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I assumed. Mr. Kelly, are there any notice of motions?
There are none.
Thank you. Any members' written motions? I'm assuming they're not. New business. Councillor Donahue.
There are none.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It's actually old business. I just wanted to, once again,
Thank you. Any members' written motions? I'm assuming they're not. New business. Councillor
reassure. I've had two ratepayers since our last meeting in August approach me, quite
Donahue.
concerned about MPAC, their assessments. They were reading something in the newspaper, Thank you, Madam Warden. It's actually old business. I just wanted to, once again, and wanted to once again state that MPAC does not actually increase your taxes. MPAC reassure. I've had two ratepayers since our last meeting in August approach me, quite concerned about MPAC, their assessments. They were reading something in the newspaper, may or may not increase your assessment, but your tax bill will be determined at your and wanted to once again state that MPAC does not actually increase your taxes. MPAC council, your lower-tier council, and by the County of Ranford by dint of the tax may or may not increase your assessment, but your tax bill will be determined at your rate, which multiplies against your assessment. So I did not think that I needed to say council, your lower-tier council, and by the County of Ranford by dint of the tax it once again, but apparently it remains that MPAC is a villain in the establishment rate, which multiplies against your assessment. So I did not think that I needed to say of property taxes. There's nothing further from the truth. Thank you. it once again, but apparently it remains that MPAC is a villain in the establishment
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Warden. So thank you to Councillor Bros, who received a message, and I think
of property taxes. There's nothing further from the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
maybe you have as well. And I'm happy to circulate it. MPAC is doing a bit of a marketing Thank you, Warden. So thank you to Councillor Bros, who received a message, and I think campaign right now about what taxes mean and how it all works in your municipality. I can forward that video around to County Council, just as a piece of information. Speaking maybe you have as well. And I'm happy to circulate it. MPAC is doing a bit of a marketing campaign right now about what taxes mean and how it all works in your municipality. of Mr. Foss, MPAC will likely come to County Council probably March, somewhere in there, I can forward that video around to County Council, just as a piece of information. Speaking the spring. Just to describe what they do is we often bring MPAC in. But I can circulate of Mr. Foss, MPAC will likely come to County Council probably March, somewhere in there, that video and subsequent marketing collateral as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Councillor Aimo, would you like to share MPAC's delegation
the spring. Just to describe what they do is we often bring MPAC in. But I can circulate that video and subsequent marketing collateral as well.
at Aimo?
Yes, they have, they have their reassessment schedule ready to go and seemingly have been
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Councillor Aimo, would you like to share MPAC's delegation at Aimo?
Yes, they have, they have their reassessment schedule ready to go and seemingly have been held up out of respect for the, I'm guessing, the municipal election process. I would expect you'll see it early in December. They do note about a 15% increase in assessments year held up out of respect for the, I'm guessing, the municipal election process. I would expect over year to the value of trillions of dollars. And they have a new process, several new you'll see it early in December. They do note about a 15% increase in assessments year over year to the value of trillions of dollars. And they have a new process, several new processes. They're more online than they've ever been. They are also working on a library processes. They're more online than they've ever been. They are also working on a library for municipal staff of judgments and opinions, which will soon be, I think will be rolled for municipal staff of judgments and opinions, which will soon be, I think will be rolled out the first of the new year. So MPAC is steadily evolving their system, and this out the first of the new year. So MPAC is steadily evolving their system, and this video is one, is one of the tools for education. It might suggest that perhaps members of, video is one, is one of the tools for education. It might suggest that perhaps members of, the heads of council might want to consider hosting sessions for their individual councils the heads of council might want to consider hosting sessions for their individual councils to educate them. I'm sure some of us could use a refresher. In fact, I'm positive. So to educate them. I'm sure some of us could use a refresher. In fact, I'm positive. So thank you. thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Murphy. Thank you very much for that. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And in speaking with the representatives of MPAC at Aimo, Thank you, Madam Warden. And in speaking with the representatives of MPAC at Aimo, I didn't realize that it was a video at that time, but I did say I wish that they I didn't realize that it was a video at that time, but I did say I wish that they had partnered had partnered with some of the county representatives or heads of council of local municipalities with some of the county representatives or heads of council of local municipalities to ensure that the messaging was clear and concise. So I'm still a bit concerned that to ensure that the messaging was clear and concise. So I'm still a bit concerned that there will be confusion over assessment versus tax rate. Thank you. there will be confusion over assessment versus tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further comments? Councillor Donahue. Thank you very much. Are there any further comments? Councillor Donahue.
Just thank you through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Kelly. I appreciate the video. Certainly, Just thank you through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Kelly. I appreciate the video. Certainly, if that's sent out, I will urge staff to post that also on our website. And I think if that's sent out, I will urge staff to post that also on our website. And I think perhaps if there is availability on the real estate of the county website, I think perhaps if there is availability on the real estate of the county website, I think it it would be appropriate there as well. I think the more places that it's posted of would be appropriate there as well. I think the more places that it's posted of how this how this system works, I think that's outstanding. Thank you. system works, I think that's outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other new business from any member of council? Thank you very much. Is there any other new business from any member of council? Seeing none, Mr. Kelly. Seeing none, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Warden. So before you all go, you all packed up. So I'll wrap this up Thank you, Warden. So before you all go, you all packed up. So I'll wrap this up for you quickly. So again, thank you, Warden, and good afternoon. I'm not quitting. Don't for you quickly. So again, thank you, Warden, and good afternoon. I'm not quitting. Don't worry. Last time this happened, Mr. Morrow quit. I'm retiring four weeks into it. So worry. Last time this happened, Mr. Morrow quit. I'm retiring four weeks into it. So as this is the last council meeting before the October 24th election, we thought we'd as this is the last council meeting before the October 24th election, we thought we'd take a minute to recognize those amongst us that have made a choice to leave municipal take a minute to recognize those amongst us that have made a choice to leave municipal politics by your own making. Councillor Reinhold, your term on County Council has been successful politics by your own making. Councillor Reinhold, your term on County Council has been successful as you brought awareness of the plight of the Pembrokean Area Airport, of efforts at as you brought awareness of the plight of the Pembrokean Area Airport, of efforts at CNL, and have been a very supportive, have been very supportive of efforts of development CNL, and have been a very supportive, have been very supportive of efforts of development of property and community services over your term. We're also very happy to have had you of property and community services over your term. We're also very happy to have had you support the Stone Dust Initiative on the Agonquin Trail, and hope that you will spend support the Stone Dust Initiative on the Agonquin Trail, and hope that you will spend the rest of retirement on the trail. Councillor Hunt, it's been a pleasure working with you the rest of retirement on the trail. Councillor Hunt, it's been a pleasure working with you on DMP, Operations and Finance and Administration. You've been a champion of simplifying our on DMP, Operations and Finance and Administration. You've been a champion of simplifying our accounting efforts and for finding ways to get development approvals moving much quicker accounting efforts and for finding ways to get development approvals moving much quicker in the County of Ranford. Retiring Greater Matawaska has a nice ring to it after all, in the County of Ranford. Retiring Greater Matawaska has a nice ring to it after all, and we hope that you get to enjoy yourself and perhaps a ride on the KMP Trail. Councillor and we hope that you get to enjoy yourself and perhaps a ride on the KMP Trail. Councillor Love, unfortunately he's not with us today. Well, congratulations on two successful terms Love, unfortunately he's not with us today. Well, congratulations on two successful terms in Matawaska Valley, Councillor Love. Your contributions to community services and health in Matawaska Valley, Councillor Love. Your contributions to community services and health committees have been extremely supportive. As a member of the Roma Board, you brought committees have been extremely supportive. As a member of the Roma Board, you brought our rural issues to the provincial table very regularly, and we like to thank you our rural issues to the provincial table very regularly, and we like to thank you for that. A personal thanks for allowing me to leave Matawaska Valley and spread my for that. A personal thanks for allowing me to leave Matawaska Valley and spread my wings wings here at the County of Ranford. Councillors Riguer and Keller, well, your lives of politics here at the County of Ranford. Councillors Riguer and Keller, well, your lives of politics aren't up yet. Of course, everybody knows that Councillor Riguer has been acclaimed, aren't up yet. Of course, everybody knows that Councillor Riguer has been acclaimed, and Sheldon is fighting for a seat on council. You both still have a desire to serve your and Sheldon is fighting for a seat on council. You both still have a desire to serve your communities as council members, and we wish you all the best as you pursue different communities as council members, and we wish you all the best as you pursue different careers with your townships. We hope to see you again here someday. I think the invite careers with your townships. We hope to see you again here someday. I think the invite was earlier today to talk about Bridges. To both of you, thank you for all of your was earlier today to talk about Bridges. To both of you, thank you for all of your work work with members of our team on DMP, Operations and Community Services. Councillor Sweet, with members of our team on DMP, Operations and Community Services. Councillor Sweet, where do we start? where do we start?
Where do you start? Where do you start?
This is where it ends. After 33 years of municipal politics and 22 on County Council, This is where it ends. After 33 years of municipal politics and 22 on County Council, we can't believe that you've thrown in your tartan towel. We felt it appropriate to highlight we can't believe that you've thrown in your tartan towel. We felt it appropriate to highlight some of your county career, and perhaps we can just take a few moments to recap your some of your county career, and perhaps we can just take a few moments to recap your days with the county. Sean. days with the county. Sean.
and the County of Ranford. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Councillor Reinhold, seconded by Councillor Riguer. Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. And with that, Councillor Sweet, you have the floor.
Well, thank you very much. Looking back, I don't know where the hair came from back there. It must have been a wig or something. It's interesting to know that you talked about wearing out CEOs. And I look back, there's only one person sitting around the table other than myself who was here 22 years ago. So that changes everything, that's for sure, and it's always a part of our life. So good luck to everybody who's running in the next election. The time was right for me, to be honest with you. I turn a certain age in another month or so, and there's more behind me than there is ahead of me. But I want to say thank you to everybody, to all of those that I've worked with, and it's a teamwork. Excuse me, it's a team. There's no I in team. And I've been blessed with being able to work with some great people, quite frankly. And we, as you saw, accomplished a great deal. And I'm very proud of that fact. So yeah, I'm leaving, but I'm not going to be far away. You know, I'll be here if anyone wants some historical facts. I go back, excuse me, 22 years. And it's actually 34 years that I've been a member of council or an elected official. I can't remember going back there, but I do not miss the signs. I do not miss knocking on doors. It's interesting. So I wish you all the best, and I'll be watching closely on election night. Unfortunately, I've got an anniversary coming up that particular night, and I won't be able to join the Warden and others at the Kojiko election party or election results situation. But good luck to everyone. Keep the taxes down, because I am now a taxpayer, and I'll be watching you all very, very closely. So again, thank you for that. That was very nice. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So it's certainly been my pleasure, as Warden, to work with all of the members of County Council. And I, you know, for the ones that are leaving, thank you for all of your many, many years of work, some more years than other, but we all are in this together, and we worked very well together in the last four years, for sure. Does anyone else have any comments? Because if not, those of you who are running for office, I wish you the very, very best of luck, and I'm hoping to see every one of your faces here in November as well. So without, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Oh, there it is. Thank you very much, Rose. I need a mover and a seconder that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the County of Renfrew at the meeting held on September the 28th, 2022 be now numbered, deemed read three times and passed. A mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Councillor Bros, seconded by Councillor Grills. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Now could I have a motion to adjourn? Councillor Donahue, Councillor Sweet, your final time as County Counselor. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much, folks.